Hello, Dr. Wilson.
Yeah, you're all right.
Read it.
Did you see this?
(laughing).
Not this slide.
Or some of my colleagues would say, "Living the dream."
I like to be very...
Living the dream.
Adam Swicki, how come you'd be in two chairs?
I don't know. I guess I'm just...
Powerful, powerful.
He's so...
Because I saw, I saw a backpack here originally, and I put the plate down there, and I was like, "Oh, this is my, my backpack."
Calling the meeting to your order. Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Genovese, Dr. Genovese.
Here.
Dr. Liliston.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Here.
Dr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Swicki.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Present.
Dr. Wilson.
Here.
Excellent. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, and visible, religion, and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, on January 3, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Bios. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of minutes, and viewing, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record-keeping. I would need a first and second on passing the, approving the minutes from February 8, 2023. Oh, and the 6th and the 13th of February. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining or decline? Minutes have passed. Our student representative is here with us. We'd love to hear from Angela Cho.
Wow, good evening, everyone. This month, we've had many exciting events. Our school's Model United Nations Club participated in Philadelphia Model United. We received a couple of best delegate awards and even a good Samaritan Award to Charles Gaskin for any other delegates during the crisis period who were in the elevator. Additionally, we have students attend the A-Go Way and Death Conference where students create the national competition for both events. Recently, two Hopewell students, Natalie Hill and one of the staff, prepared to go to the Energy State Senate Education League at the State House. The bill consisted of having five people distribute activities for mental or physical health issues, and they are waiting for upcoming events. The two girls shared their personal experiences and leadership in the bill, which involved students by a few. In addition to the bill, there is a program to our chair that is also waiting for discussion at the Hall of Fame. In the past month, Dr. Wilson, Mr. Hutchinson, Miss Riley, and I, and a couple of others, came to discuss and start to finalize the goal that the Board has been having. Where we still make different legs. Many students don't understand what democracy is and don't understand that it's half of their voices that we have in our community, which while they're brainstorming, smart tips, and something they want in their school, help them understand the power of democracy. As I mentioned, for the past couple of months, this city council has had a whole major competition for future. Each class supervisor has now taken a senior charity. Professional class trust calls here, or software side out of these communities. And the junior class selected a national council on public healing, and finally, this new trust has been, and yet, a focus by...
Angela, could you pull your mic closer to you? Yeah?
This city council will give an efficient of $125 to every class charity, but will award the winning class five hundred dollars. This competition will serve many purposes, including universal awareness of our Christian class charities. How we can build new self-defense communities, helping seniors grow to learn in self-protection skills that will adapt for young women entering college. On top of this, we're trying to support those who feel in situations of disproactive activity and violence before physical action is taken. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions from the Board? Yes, Alex?
Do you have a link to the, to the proposal to the Education Committee at the Legislature?
Can you have the article, please? Yes, could you present it to me?
I'd like, sorry, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that elevator story.
Yeah. Any other questions? Wonderful, thank you so much. As always, you're welcome to stay, but we understand if you need to go. I'm going to forego a report this evening. Dr. Trees?
We're going to forego it as well.
Okay. All right. Presentation on annual audit.
Sorry, but I can't forego, forego. So the, the, this is an annual requirement. We must discuss the annual audit at a public meeting. It has already been discussed with Finance and Facilities Committee last month. So what I can quickly say is that this is a exhaustive process in our district. It starts in June with two weeks of preliminary work, some basic testing of payroll accounts payable and our internal controls. There's a major internal control document. The auditors go away for the majority of the summer, come back right after Labor Day, where they spend a minimum of four weeks, and other times, it's longer in district. And then there's constant review throughout the fall and into probably the first week in December, where they review, test, and retest documents. There's a review of all of our individual funds. We work on fund counting, fund accounting. And then there's an analytical review, and there's also a peer review, where auditors from other districts audit my auditors. The auditors also provide ongoing support for questions we may have during the year on various issues. But it is an exhaustive process. It's not a rubber-stamp audit, and it, it puts my office and the rest of this building and the schools under some detailed questioning. So it's not just my office, it's the entire district that, that has to meet with these folks. There are four types of opinions you can get. An unmodified opinion, a modified opinion, where it means the auditor has to make a, a comment or a re-statement of facts, because you've done something incorrect. There's an adverse opinion, which is you don't want to get. It means they are giving you a negative opinion on what you've done. And a disclaimer of opinion, which means they've looked through your books, and they can't make an opinion, because your books are in such bad shape. Okay? An unmodified opinion, it doesn't seem like much, but that's what you want. You want them to take your financial statements as presented and say that there are no material weaknesses or defects in them, and that's what we are receiving. So the Board can feel at ease that we have passed yet another audit here. Something that we're required to talk about are fund balances. And a lot of times, these are misleading, but they're required. We did mention in other areas that we do work on generally accepted accounting principles and the Government Accounting Standards Board. Excess surplus, so I'm going to talk about the first three items. The first three items have already been included in this year's budget, not next year's, this year's budget, as revenues that we use to balance the current year's budget. We have $91,000 on our maintenance reserve account. This is for routine and required maintenance. If we were to run short, for example, on repairs during the year, if we were to run short, we could tap into these dollars for, for maintenance projects, not capital projects, but maintenance-type projects. Why we don't put a lot of money into it, because we budget sufficiently for our required and routine maintenance. Capital reserve are for capital projects, large-scale, major replacements, such as the boiler and chiller project that we're doing over this coming summer. And we set money aside for those, mostly because of the large costs. Maintenance projects tend to be smaller, capital projects are rather large. And that's money that we've set aside for those. We also have an allowable surplus, which is 4%, this year, 4% of audited expenditures. And that leads us to a $4.1 million, a quote-unquote rainy day fund. It was increased to 4% during the pandemic. I have an asterisk there that says that figure, 4.1 million, will be reduced during the 2022-23 audit process. And we've already done it through our budget process, so we're ahead of the game. That number should have been, this year, 1.6 million. Okay? So while it does say that we have $17 million worth of surplus, the top, all the numbers at the top have been spent, and the numbers at the bottom are really reserve accounts, and a number that is high due to an audit will be reducing that number. So we just wanted you to know that our rainy day fund, that rainy day fund, should something happen that we didn't have funds for, is about 1.6 million, 1.65 million, that you could draw upon. You can't touch it without Commissioner approval. You have to go to the Commissioner of Education to get approval, and you have to jump through any number of obstacles to prove to the state and the Commissioner that you do actually need it. Okay? We did have three minor recommendations through the examination of our books. So I'm just going to run down them very quickly. The ESER grants, which are the federal grants that are tied to COVID, the pandemic. We had two instances where employees were charged the grant that were not board-approved. So what that means is to be able to be used for a federal grant, the employee must be identified and placed on a board agenda prior to being paid. And we had two instances where employees submitted time sheets, appropriate time sheets for the appropriate work to be tied to the appropriate grant, but they did not get prior approval by the Board. They've received subsequent approval, but they worked before they were approved. Okay? What saved us on that one was that we did have time sheets and folks working for the proper grant as designed. The second area where we missed was we had an instance in our lunch program where a service provider exceeded the quote threshold without quotes. Once you hit $6,600, you're required to get quotes. Each individual occurrence with this vendor was small dollars, and we forgot to get quotes or did, were neglected to get quotes for an item, and it pushed us over the threshold in the aggregate. So each individual item was below the threshold, which wouldn't be required to get quotes, but after we hit 6,600, they should have gotten quotes. So we'll correct that going forward. The last item had to do with our student activity accounts. These are funds that are managed by our principals in their buildings for small items. Most of the big dollars there are for our athletic accounts at the high school and our clubs at the high school and middle school, where money comes in. For example, there is money being raised for, by a car wash for the baseball team, and they take that money that they raise and they put it towards, you know, new, new warm-up suits or something to be done at the field. As you may notice, many of our clubs do these kinds of fundraisers, and money goes in there. There were several instances, five to be exact, where monies were spent on items that kind of deviated from the purpose of it. And we're going to correct that. We had some new secretaries in some of our buildings who were getting up to speed on these, and we have already educated them on what they can use and not use student activities for. They cannot be used for regular purchases. They must be used for something that has to deal with the entire student population. Something special, something fun, something unique, an assembly, something to be used for Field Day, that kind of thing. Regular supplies and things like that, can't use student activity accounts for that. The good news is that none of these particular comments are substantive in nature, do not affect our opinion in any way, and in fact, are actually quite common mistakes that are made in school districts throughout the state of New Jersey. So while I would like to have zero recommendations, these are some things that we can easily remedy. Just some final comments. This is my office, is report card, per se, but it doesn't, we can't do it alone. We need the help of this entire building. We work closely with all the offices in this building, as well as our central administrators, who are in the back. Their staffs, together with mine, help to make this possible for the district. And we are in a good financial position right now, and we have internal controls that are very good and are being followed on a regular basis. Again, it gives staff accountability. We know that we have to go through this every year, so our, my team is, is making sure that we're following it closely during, during the year. It also helps us on CUSAC. You all heard that we went through CUSAC earlier this winter. And the audit is a huge part of points in the fiscal area for CUSAC. So audits like this help us pass that portion of CUSAC. Are any questions on the audit? I know it's enthralling. Alex?
Since you've elected one important point.
What's that?
There was some kind of an award for recognition that was given as a result of an audit.
Yes, there, there is an award that goes along with it. We will submit for this financial statement. We did win last year. But it's, it's nice to be recognized for the reporting that you're doing by a, a national organization. And it's not earned by, by many school districts nationwide and in New Jersey, so... Eleven in a row. Okay. Eleven in a row. So... If there's no other questions, we can move on to the...
That's the easiest question.
The rest of the evening. All right. So the, we started in the middle. Sorry that I started in the middle, we'll perhaps go back to the beginning. All right, we are here tonight for the mandatory adoption of our tentative budget that will need to be submitted to the County Office of Education, ultimately, the Commissioner of Education later this week. We're going to see a lot of the similar slides, but there are new folks in the audience tonight. So we will begin. We always start with our mission statement. This is what drives our budget. We see it in a lot of things we do, but it's on the wall on folks behind you. We just, we're very cognizant of this as we develop our budget. Our budget calendar, we've, we've started back in the summer. Our first presentation was in September. We've gone the good way down the slide. We're down at March 13, our budget's adoption. And the next step is to the County Office, and ultimately, to April 24th, we'll have a formal public hearing and final adoption of our budget. Just some quick facts. About 3,500 students, stable right now. We'll get into that a little bit later. About 3,000 students transported every day, eight facility buildings, 431 teachers, 24 administrators. And we are an I group. That's our history, an I, which is the second most wealthy school district. J is the highest. They don't really use these anymore, but we still use these when we try to compare ourselves with like districts. So we are a district that we like to consider ourselves unique. We have small schools and small class sizes, a lot of services and a lot of programs that are, in addition to the core, the, the basic standards that we have. We have an experienced teaching staff. They stay for a long period of time. They're well-educated, well-professionally-developed, and support our children well. We also provide a lot of SCL and mental health supports. Again, we mentioned programs that exceed state minimums, from the arts to the athletics to our core content standards. Again, things we value. We provide, again, academic opportunities for all students, whether they're going into the military, whether they're going to college, other types of careers, the, the, let's think of it, trades, the trades, thank you. Again, we also pride ourselves in our extracurricular activities. 85% of our students at the middle school and high school do something at our schools after school. Looking at the whole child, not just the academics. We want them to be involved in a lot of different areas. We're interested in long-term planning. Our curriculum folks are looking out two and three years to see what's going to be, how curriculums are going to change and moving forward. Again, planning for staff. What are we going to need, not only this year, but in the years to come? We have aging facilities. Three of our facilities are in excess of 100 years old or approaching 100 years old. We need to make plans to make sure that these are operating at their efficient levels. Again, it provides better learning for our students if they can learn in a, in a quality environment. And something that we've worked through our Community Relations Committee, better messaging. Trying to get out the, the information to folks in a more convenient and consistent way. Again, just a video, a pictorial image of what we do, from our auto shop to our choirs, woodshops, regular classrooms, and our athletics. Something that we try to focus on, all these different areas every day. How do we know that we're being successful in what we do? Climate surveys submitted by the Superintendent's Office, graduate focuses from our guidance folks, the curriculum revisions that we do, our college acceptances to some of the best colleges and trade schools in the nation, the success of our athletic programs. And it's not just success on the field, it's how many kids are participating. This is, is a sign of success. Obviously, our test scores are important, both nationally and at the state level. We value all of those items. Again, I'm not going to read through these, but these are the, the successes that we've had. Again, everything from niche ratings to athletics to our, to our fine arts programs and college acceptances are all things that we pride ourselves on doing. Again, we also try to play an important role in our community, from hosting forums, vaccine clinics, COVID testing sites, our partnership with the Healthy Communities, Healthy Youth Foundation, our, having the food pantry next door. All part, play a role in our community that we are proud to support. Okay, so as we got into priorities, these are the things that we wanted to make sure we maintained as we develop a budget. Again, going back to our mission statement, we didn't want to lose any of the programs that we've developed. We wanted to maintain everything. The academic program. We wanted to make sure that we could continue to revise our curriculum when appropriate and when necessary. Again, class size is very important. We wanted to maintain our class sizes in accordance with our district policies and Board of Ed, uh, State Board of Ed policies. We had to meet our contractual obligations to our staff members. As we mentioned on the first page, we have a considerable number of staff, and we needed to make sure that they were taken care of. Evaluate all of our programs, not just the academic ones, our cleaning protocols, our facility programs. And again, developing a budget that, that makes sure we cover this year, but doesn't put us in a bad position for years to come. So the drivers in this year's budget. Health insurance was a huge driver. The, the inflation, according, associated with health insurance right now is increasing at a great level, as well as folks going back to the doctor after staying away during the pandemic years. We see folks going back now and getting those services that they had maybe delayed during that time period. Transportation is a huge driver right now. Bus route renewals, according to the CPI, are looking at around a 6% increase this year, driven by driver shortages and fuel increases. We are fortunate in this district that we've been able to attract drivers, but our contracted agencies have not been able to do that. It's a kind of a catch-22. We hire folks that may leave them, leaving the pool shortage. Again, with fuel for, for transportation, we also have fuel for heating our buildings. Electric and gas have also gone up. Unanticipated facility and maintenance costs to our buildings. We talked at the last meeting about a sewer issue at Timber Lane that we did not foresee, that could be up to a $250,000 project. We have to kind of budget for those as much as we can to address those. Special education is a driver, especially out of district tuition, which is sanctioned by the state. Their, our budget cap is 2%. Their tuitions tend to increase closer to 10% per year. Property and casualty, like our health benefit insurance, is increasing. Workers' compensation has become more liberal than it has in the past, almost doubling our premium that we pay for workers' compensation. And we are a member of a 300 student, or 300 district consortium, so we feel that we are getting good access to the marketplace there. Curriculum instruction is what we do. And we want to make sure that we're putting dollars towards that, both its development and its implementation. Staffing, obviously, our job is educating students, and we need staff to be able to do that. Just to look at enrollment. Back in 910, we were kind of, or 2010-11, we kind of peeked over this past trend. We've seen some dips and some slight increases, but we're looking at a stability right now for the next several years before some planned increases are due to come due to some construction that's being done out in the township. But we should start seeing students enter as early as next year. Again, just to look at our total enrollment. The other one was first grade. Looking at our total enrollment and looking somewhere in the area of 3,500 students for next year. So we're kind of plateauing right now before we expect to see a modest increase over the next 10, 15 years. The projection isn't expected to get as high as the 4,100 students we had back in the early 2000s. So what have we done to control costs over the last several years? We moved to a self-insured health benefits plan, which allows us to control costs if the health plans run well, we're able to realize the savings. We don't just pay premiums, which go to the carrier if, if services aren't taken. We wanted to return our students in special education back to our own home here in our district, where we feel that we can do a better job at a more cost-effective rate in an early, restrictive environment. We have looked at reducing staff when, when necessary or when needed. We've also looked at reducing administration. Make a systematic change in both staff and in administration. We do participate in the School Choice Program, which allows us to bring in students to our Performing Arts Academy that brings in almost $300,000 in revenue to our district. Technology has streamlined, they've gone virtual in servers and items such as that. We've moved to a Google environment, which is less costly, phased out the Apple environment, dual environment of Apple and Microsoft to a more sustainable Google environment. And as I mentioned, we do bid cooperatively for our energy, hopefully getting better prices to do that. Also, the referendum that we just recently completed was with higher-efficiency equipment, and we are seeing a reduced usage in some of those things. So we have tried to tighten our belts when we can without affecting the program. So this past budget year was, was quite trying, to say the least. We did start the year with a 4.2 approximate shortfall. We looked initially at a plan for additional state aid of $600,000 due to some information I had been hearing from folks at the state. The additional state was, was going to be coming, and we anticipated 600 of the $900,000 that we did get. We utilized some of our bank cap, unused spending authority from previous years. We also needed to use a projected waiver of $1.5 million to, to take care of health benefit costs that, again, as I mentioned, are increasing greatly over the past several years. That left us with a gap of about $1.8 million. And the Board at that time asked us to go back and take a look at what could be done to reduce costs even further. But the caveat they gave us was they didn't want us to affect program at all, if possible. We wanted to leave our program intact. So this is what we did. We were able to, through looking at, carefully at our program, the reduction of a secretarial position, there'll be some transfers, move-arounds to cover that. We realized that due to enrollment, we were able to reduce some full-time staff positions. When we developed that original budget, we had some staff members, some senior staff members who had not yet offered retirement notifications. members who had not yet offered retirement notifications. In that two-month period of time between looking at it originally and, and closing the budget, we did see that there were some staff members that were retiring, and what breakage means is a higher-priced staff member is replaced with a lower-priced staff member at a savings. So again, we were able to realize some significant dollars in staffing, some due to a real reduction and others due to a monetary reduction. We looked at some of our software platforms used for, to enhance education. We also looked at some, such as a Zoom platform, that is nice to have. We, we have other opportunities through Google platform and Microsoft Teams to, to realize that same kind of virtual platform without paying for Zoom. And Zoom did take advantage of a lot of folks during the pandemic. We're gonna try to shift gears and use other platforms that may not be as costly. We were also able to realize, due to Ms. Donardo's, looking at her tuitions, a reduction in about $100,000 in special ed tuitions going out. And again, that's a moving target that she's constantly looking at. And we've delayed technology upgrades around the district. There'll be a delay in replacement of some Chromebooks and laptops, and also a delay in a computer lab at the high school. We do plan on doing these in the next year or two, but we're going to extend out the life of some of our technology equipment. This is where we've stopped, as we bet we had a balanced budget. If we were to go further, if we did not realize the additional $900,000 in state aid, where would we have had to go to find additional places to cut? So this list, and we have it in red, highlighted there, that we did not recommend these to our board, and then they're, they're in no order, no, you know, chronological order or hierarchy of order, but these are things that we thought that would have effect on our program, that we felt we could absorb, things we didn't wanna do, but if push came to shove, that we would identify some and/or all of these to get us down. Kind of, again, something the board didn't wanna go to.
So I just wanted to note that though the recommendation came back to the finance committee that these areas weren't being touched, there has been some discussion about, over the next year, looking at things like athletic fees, transportation, specifically around courtesy busing, as well as, I don't know what the, the athletic fee I mentioned. Eliminate, again, kindergarten paraprofessionals, just the, the number, and that will certainly be measured for where it makes sense. So those three things, I think, Adam, if you wanna kind of say more about that.
Yeah, I think what we were thinking of is, we had some really good discussion at our work session last week, and no, one particular was the athletic fee. No, I think it was about 10 years ago, we wound up eliminating that. And in terms of balancing what we do, in terms of what we put on, you know, put as a tax burden versus what we have people in the, in the, who benefit from the programs contribute. Obviously, it's mostly weighted toward taxes, but we, we talked about it from a, you know, that overall standpoint, and we thought, well, at the very least, we should be, continue to think about these things, because we're going to be having some pretty significant challenges over the next couple of years, I think, given the way inflation appears to be going. So we should be considering these things, and we thought it makes sense to have the administration take some time, continue to study it and see, all right, is there some sort of way where it might provide us a benefit without being, there were, some of the reasons we got rid of it originally were, we felt it wasn't, there were some equity issues related to it. So, you know, is there a mechanism by which we could do it where it would be fair, but could help us from a, an overall financial standpoint, given what we're looking at? So the, the same thing with some of the other options. So, you know, optimizing the staffing, things of that nature.
As I've said before, as soon as we put this budget to bed, I'll start to build the next one, and, you know, this will be on our radar.
But then again, as we're gonna set a gift, folks, that's future, like, how can we consolidate and do some of what we did not, to just make programming? Courtesy busing, we're gonna be looking at sooner than later, the board and the finance committee has agreed, to examine ways where we could, you know, try to kind of consolidate the cost for families. We are gonna look at that, based on, on, like, right now, see if that's something we can do, but the rest of the things that's exploring in the future, how we can maybe realize savings and consolidate some of these places.
Okay, it's basically, I mean, just some simple effects to the reductions. Class sizes are projected to be in the 22 to 25 range at the elementary schools next year at all levels. This year, they were probably 21 to 23 throughout the elementary grades, and we will be looking to, as we move into the spring and into the summer, monitoring those carefully as we start to get more kindergarten enrollments in and move-ins to adjust that. We do not wanna have any class sizes greater than 25, and we will have to pivot if that, that happens. Some of the reductions that we've looked at may cause electives at the secondary, secondary to be consolidated or eliminated. And when I say consolidated, it may mean taking two levels of a class and merging it into one class, two smaller portions of that moved into a, a single classroom, which we do now, anyway. So we did talk about transportation, just wanted to put that up there. It was a hit this year, it was a 6%, increase, the maximum that could be done. We could rebid, and we did that last year, and our costs wound up increasing probably about 15 to 20%, because they hadn't been raised more than a percent over the last five to six years before that. So they were behind the eight ball, and they, they were able to kick back our routes, and we rebid them, and we were fortunate to actually get them. Several school districts had their bus companies not renew at all. Again, we talked about courtesy busing, it'll be on a future discussion list for finance facilities, but just the, the cost right now, the average cost to transport a student in district is greater than $1,000 on average. The courtesy busing fee right now is $500 a student. Again, we were looking for some areas to cost contain. We do oversubscribe our routes, especially at the high school and middle school, they're combined routes. We do know that there is a certain number of students who don't ride home because they're staying after school, and we, we, we staff, or we populate those buses accordingly. So this is where it landed us, with the comparisons, obviously, between our proposed budget and our adopted budget. We're looking at around a 5% increase in our total operating expenses going forward, again, driven largely by our increase in health benefits and transportation. And correspondingly, our revenues, we're using more fund balance to balance our budget next year. We do have, again, mentioned waivers to our tax levy to bring us to that 4.1% level. We did achieve a 14.8 to almost 15% increase in our state aid for the coming year, and are able to realize some additional local revenues this year, basically driven in large part by some of the transportation fees, and also folks are starting to utilize our, rent our facilities again. After COVID, there was kind of a stagnation there for a while, but we start, are starting to see folks re-enter our buildings as we have become accustomed. Just a little bit, though, you saw the numbers there, but our budget is largely funded by local funding, 92%. It's down a little bit, used to be over 96%. We have been receiving a little bit of state aid, more each year. Our state funding has crept, crept up to about 7%, and federal funding is less than 1% of our budget, and those are for special programs. IDEA focuses on our special ed population, and the titles focus on some of our, our needier populations, also focuses on professional development and wellness. Looking at it as a pie chart, starting with 12 o'clock in athletics co-curricular, swinging all the way around to the 9 o'clock hour for staff benefits. Almost 70 or greater than 75% of our budget goes in towards the direct instruction of our children through staffing and their benefits. The remainder of it goes towards what we would call necessary services. Transportation is a required service. Maintain the maintenance of our buildings is a requirement. Our debt service, which is our mortgage payment on the most recent referendum, which is the only one debt we have left, and some small capital outlay projects that we are doing. So again, the majority of our budget is in staff salaries and benefits, all of our staff salaries and benefits from our educational staff to our support staff. We did do a discussion last week in our, in our work session on the, on the use of surplus. Now, we do have a, a little bit more surplus added to the budget this year, but $1.7 million of that is, is towards a Hope, is a Chiller project at Hope Elementary, so it's not in our operating expenses, it's not gonna be recurring expenses, it's a one-time expense that next year will be able to re-address when we develop a budget. The use of surplus this year is about $3 million. Guiding principle that we've used over the past years is to try to stay as close to $2.5 million as we can. This year is, is an anomaly. We have a, a great period of inflation, and we are, while we are asking the taxpayers to put a bigger portion of the bill, we're also trying to put a bigger piece of the bill ourselves as well to kind of mitigate that. So what the tax levy looks like, the general fund is about a 4.2%, 4.3% increase, offset by a slight decrease in our debt service for a total tax increase of 4.1%. Things we don't control, this is something that will drive the tax rate, which we'll get into in the future. We have a tax levy increase, which drives our tax rate. We have ratable increases at the township, close to $104 million. Basically, what that's for is the redevelopment of that Bristol Myers Squibb property over on, as you are driving into Hopewell Borough or towards Hopewell Borough. That had rolled off the tax lev, ledgers, and they're starting to repopulate that site, and that's what we're seeing here. Hopewell Borough and Pennington Borough are fairly built out to commercial enterprise, and we're starting to see that kind of stagnation there in the ratables. Something else that drives the tax rate is the percentage of each dollar that is required by each municipality, and it's done by the overall wealth of each community. The, the municipal tax assessor at Mercer County takes the values, the equalized values of all the properties, and they generate how much each particular municipality will pay. So for example, Hopewell Borough is paying 6.68 cents for every dollar, Hopewell Township 82.27 cents, and Pennington Borough 11.03 cents. Again, things that are controlled by the Mercer County tax assessor. What it will mean is the Hopewell Borough will see a 7 cent increase in their tax rate this year to move it to $1.82. The average house of about $480,000, which is the average home, 296 additional dollars. Hopewell Township will see a 3 cent increase, or 172 additional dollars for the average home, again, around 480,000. Pennington Borough, $1.76, or 703 increase to the average home there. That brings us to the end. We'll open it up to the board for questions, then we'll open it up to the public, as far as the public here. Was that only a perfect, yeah, for ourself?
Any questions from the board?
I had one, Bob. So thank you for running through this, and, you know, again, I think we had a work session last Monday, and it was very, very good. We spent a long time going through a variety of options, trying to understand what led to some of the increases, so, you know, really appreciate the administration leading us through that. The question I had for you is this, there've been some instances in the past where if we got some additional aid from the state, like you'd mentioned here, it was about $300,000 more than you estimated, that in some circumstances, we were able to use that to offset the local tax levy. This year, we're not, we're not doing that. So if you do that, you either, if, if you hadn't gotten that $300,000, we would have either had to have an impact on our resources used for our program, or we would have had to use more surplus from this year. So I guess, did, before we got that extra $300,000, did we, were we looking at either increasing use of surplus or cutting our expenses? And, you know, essentially, what led us to the decision to put it all towards the programming? What would have been the impact to either use of surplus in this year, or, you know, additional cuts on our expenses next year? You know, what, what would have been the impact?
So, I mean, there's, and it's a good point. We probably would have gone here to this list and started to look at things there. I looked at surplus, but right now, we're pushing over $3 million worth of surplus to fund the operating budget for next year, again, in a period of inflation. And we did a, an, an exercise last week in finance facilities committee, where we looked at how much money was actually going to be left at the end of this year, and it's very close to being what that number is, that $3 million number. So to put monies aside, or put monies from surplus that may not be there at the end of this year, I felt was not the responsible thing to do. The board, and again, the administration didn't want to touch these at this point, we wanted to keep the program as whole as we could. 300,000 is not a, I don't think it's a drop in the bucket when it comes to the programs like this. Also, that part of that 300 was picked up by an additional, and we talked about this last week as well, charter school student that was assigned to us. So that was a $58,000 placement in a, in a local charter school. So essentially, we're looking at another $250,000 to put, to more surplus to put, and that would put us into a spot where almost $3.3 million in surplus, when we try to keep it around $2.5 million. So that's kind of, you know, why I didn't really wanna go towards an additional surplus allotment.
Okay. No, thank you. And if anything, I, I can, I, I will say this, I concur in terms of use of surplus from this year. You know, just from finance and facilities last week, you know, the two things that stood out to me were both from our healthcare expenses and trans, was transportation. Those two things in combination are winding up costing us about 1.8 million more than we had originally budgeted for last year. So yes, we're very tight on this year's budget.
So just to, you know, we, we've talked about it a little bit, and I just wanted to, you know, and we talked about it a little bit after the meeting last week, but I, I know there are some that feel we are, it's gonna be in unbridled inflation going into next year, and that may very well be true, but what I'm hoping is that one of the biggest drivers was health benefits, that we've reached a, a peak in that. We do have a stop-loss in place that will prevent us from going too high, but what I'm hoping is that a lot of those COVID things that were put off, next year, we won't see that, and we'll see a drop-off in our health benefits. So that next year, when we're building our budget, while we may be seeing inflation in the cost of the services that people go to get, we won't have as many people going for the services, and that hopefully there'll be a net decrease next year, or at least the ability to keep the number flat instead of a huge increase like we had this year. And that should help us attack some of the other areas of inflation.
No, thank you. I just had one other comment, which is just going all the way back to, you know, probably June of last year. I think your office and the administration could see this coming towards this year, so like compared to prior years, I think, you know, you've done a really, really good job this year of like helping set the expectations for the board leading up to this point. You know, if, if anything, I knew what the picture was much earlier than any other time I'd seen in my time on board, so thank you.
I think that when we started doing it a few years back, that the quarterly review for you, for, I mean, I do it almost daily, looking at how the trends, but for you guys to see it, and that it's not, you know, it's not voodoo economics or anything like that, it's all, you know, it's laid out there, this is what we have, this is what we spend, this is what's left. And, you know, it gives you an idea of what's trending in that particular area. We had savings here, we had, you know, overruns here, so.
No, thank you.
So I'm, I'm gonna ask a question, Bob. That I know the answer to, but just in case there are faults in the audience that are wondering. Can you summarize what tentative budget adoption that we're going to vote on today means, and what the process is from now until we actually have to adopt the final budget, right?
So the statute, statute says a tentative budget must be approved and So, the statute says a tentative budget must be approved and submitted by the Board of Education by March 20th, at which time, there is a review, there's a technical review of your budget. While you can set expenditures and revenues, they all fit into a grand scheme that talks about fund balances and mechanisms within the state administrative cost guidelines and all that. And those are reviewed by the county office, and they can come in and they could say, make a change here, make a change there, there's explanations that have to be had, why are you high in health benefits, and you have to provide documentation. So the period between March 20th and April 24th is designated for their review, and also provides us time to advertise the budget. The budget must be advertised a minimum of four days before the public hearing, and then the board can make a change after that. So at the 24th, the board can accept the budget the way it was originally approved, or it can make changes if it happens. A lot of times, boards strike a budget in March, and they find additional things that happen. Maybe their health benefit bills are going to go higher than they anticipated, their special education tuitions are going to go higher, and it gives them a chance to either find additional revenues, use additional waivers to increase their budget if necessary, or they can cut it. If additional revenues come in, or they decide that some of these things on the list, though, they can take them off. It just gives them additional time to make a final decision.
So, in effect, we have an opportunity to continue looking at the budget and the adjustments as the county commissioner is ready to give us more information.
Anything else? Okay, so I'm going to request a motion in a second to...
Public comments.
Oh, public comments.
Only on the budget.
Only on the budget, gotcha. Thank you. Okay, so the members of the public are invited to address the board on the budget for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. And just want to remind you to please sign in if you have any comments.
Sorry, I have something. We just have a timer. Okay. So my name is Cara LeTusis, and I'm a resident of Pennington Borough, 23 East Welling Avenue. And I have three children who have been in the district at some point. Next year, I'll only have one student, but I wanted to kind of speak for residents of Pennington Borough who I know have reached out, particularly Mr. Resnick, but others as well, about the courtesy busing. So last year, we had a significant price increase. So just to put it in context, so a family of three, like my family, would pay $10,500 for busing to have their child attend the school district, K to 12, so from 6th grade to 7th grade, that's an extra $10,000. There's many families in Pennington Borough that have four children, so that's $14,000 per family, the courtesy busing. I understand it's at cost, but I don't believe that it's the cost of just going one mile from the borough across. So I wanted to see if there's some things that can be done to kind of think outside the box about the Pennington Borough kids, maybe a trolley bus, maybe just a morning bus. I'm also on the Pennington Borough Planning and Zoning Board, and some of you may not be aware, but we just approved the TD Bank to be a Starbucks, which will exit through the Uncle Ed's parking lot onto Delaware, where most of the Pennington Borough kids walk. So if, I mean, I'm all for encouraging walking, and that's what my kids are doing this year, they're walking, so, but it's going to become less safe for them to do that, as you have people, especially in the morning, getting coffee and coming out that way. So maybe just a morning bus, something like that could be considered. And right now, we have, you know, three lights to get through. So when my daughter, you know, is sick and I have to drive my younger son, it's raining, it takes three lights to get across Delaware. I think with that Starbucks and people cutting out, it might be four, five lights, you have a lot of idling of cars, which is a climate change issue. So I like, I get that encouraging the kids to walk is great, but I think it's, there's multiple issues with Pennington Borough and that crossover. So I don't, I personally have a hard time believing that it's $1,000 per kid to go from the borough to the high school. I think that's probably $1,000 per kid when you're going out to the township. So I know, Mr. Resnick, I know you probably received a lot of information about it, I know a lot of people couldn't come tonight, but there's a lot of concern, and I'm hoping
Any other comments?
So the board has challenged us to look at ways that we can alleviate that cost to you, the folks that are paying for the courtesy busing. It's not something that the district is pushing because we think it's good for them to walk. That's under what the state is requiring, that's not considered hazardous, which we've absorbed. So we're going to look at the family cap. 500 isn't cost, it's just basically, this is what it costs to run a bus, and we divide up the seats among whoever's on it. But we will certainly, we're going to certainly look at that and see what we can do. Again, that means we're going to have to cut from somewhere else, right? But we're committed to making a look at that and not wait till next year to see if we can do that. We're trying to look sooner than later to see what we can do.
Public comments are now closed. I'm requesting a motion in a second for approving the tentative budget.
Motion.
Can I get a roll call?
Dr. Genovese. Dr. Liliston. Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick.
Yep.
Mr. Sewicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
We will now have a public comment that is open to any topic, and the members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. The response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future board meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. And again, once again, just remember to sign in at the podium. Public comments now open. Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. Do we have any old business items? Okay. Seeing, seeing none. Would like to approve consent? So I'd like to approve consent, and I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, or? Or abstaining? I was like, what? Any opposed or abstaining? All right. Do you want to kick it off? So we'll have all of our committee updates?
Okay. So for Finance and Facilities, we had a meeting last Monday. We, you know, most of the discussion was the quarterly budget review and preparation of this year's budget, so I won't belabor that point. Just the two things, everything was on consent. The two things I'll point out are that we're doing, we did a bid award for the Chiller and Boiler replacement activity at Hopeful Elementary, so that's very important moving forward. It's a lengthy process. I believe the Chiller is on a one-year back order, so it's timely that we get it started now. The other thing is, I believe Mr. Quinn told us that we'll be having a very active two months doing steam pipe removals this summer, because we're going to be going from a steam system to a water-based heating system, which it's more efficient, it's more reliable, but it's costly to implement, but it's the right thing to do.
I must, I'd like to add that we did do very well on the bid, so we're happy that we went out early for this project.
Good. And then the one other thing Bob noted, the, we have, I think it was 200 feet of the hallway in Timber Lane that we're going to have to be excavating to access a collapsed sewer pipe to fix and repair, because right now, we have two restrooms which are inoperable. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Well, let's move on to community relations. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped a few. I went H to J. How about personnel? Andrea.
So we had our meeting right before this board meeting this evening. We had a number of retirements, some to note. We had Martin Knott from Timber Lane, who's been with us since 1998. We have Ellen Thomas Cavell, also from Timber Lane, she's also been with us since 1998. We have Julia Berman, who is an administrative assistant, also with us since 1998, that seems to be the magic year, I don't know what's going on with that, as well as Mary Gialla, Gialla, okay, I apologize, who is a paraprofessional, but also with us from 1998. We have a couple of, I think one other retirement from Jane Von Jiglinski, okay, a paraprofessional from Bear Tavern, and she's been with us since 2004. We had an appointment of, one of, a note was a campus safety officer, which is nice, over at Timber Lane, and another appointment, another couple of other appointments that were especially exciting. And then we have some nice long-term subs to take care of those that might be taking family leave for various reasons or others. And then on the agenda, you'll see some adjustments to some salaries because of different, help me out here, a couple of different things. Right, right, that's what I thought, for the attainment of their graduate course, courses and things. And I think that's it. Am I missing something else? Mentors, some ECA things? No, that's it? Okay. So that's about it for today. We need a motion? I hate this part, okay. Okay, so we need a motion for a roll call to approve all of these wonderful things that are happening here in our personnel department.
Dr. Liliston. Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Sewicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Dr. Genovese.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
We met last Thursday, and Mr. Becker, who is our athletic director, presented on giving us an athletic update. So he just reviewed the numbers from fall and spring sports. There were some peaks in the spring, but then some decreases in the fall, but overall, it's been pretty consistent and well-subscribed to. We also had Dr. Patel present on the climate change grant that we would like to accept from the DOE. So the Department of Education gave schools various amount of money for, towards climate change initiatives, and we would like to spend our money on training teachers going through professional development so they can then turnkey it to the rest of our faculty.
I don't know if, I don't, from, from...
Yeah, that's, yeah, next one.
I don't, I don't think that's ed program, though, right? Okay.
Well, Mr. Becker, you know.
Becker.
Yeah, next one.
I heard it somewhere.
Did.
Oh, that's funny. Oh my gosh, that made me... No, that's, that's okay, that's okay. Okay, well, everything is on consent, we don't have anything. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Polisius. Community relations, now.
Now we can go. So we had a nice discussion about some of the superintendent chats that have been happening, one around the school budget 101, just to give our community sort of the foundation to talk about the budget. Our superintendent, Dr. Treese, also had a really interactive chat on social media, race, and culture, where we had over 30 of our community members' parents attend. It was a great talk where they not only discussed some of the challenges happening in the community, but also had demonstrations on how we are introducing activities to our students, on how to have civil conversations, how to talk about issues in the community. So the people attending got to practice some of the things that our students practice around those. There'll be a future social media event happening later in March. And, oh, and I neglected to mention that in addition to our community, we also had several representatives from our police department also there. And so we've been asking them sort of to step up a little more and be involved with our community. They do a great job, and we really appreciate that they attended that session. So as far as communication, we are still working on our communication plan, which is our primary goal for this year, and then expecting more of these sort of chats and coffees to get the community really up to speed on what we're doing, increase transparency, and be highlighted on some of the issues. Did I miss anything, Dr. Treese, that you wanted to highlight?
No, I was just talking about our next superintendent chat, and our local police department involvement in that, they've offered to host that with me to talk about the drug issue that is around, and also specifically give parents and caregivers some tips on what are these things look like, what kind of things are we seeing, and actually bring in samples. Because as a parent, you could be looking right at something that you don't know what it is, like these cartridges and things, and so they're going to give you actually, this is what it looks like, this is what you need to look out for, this is where we're seeing the problems in the community, and help give you some guidance. We're going to do this in the spring, later in the spring, closer to summer, when they're all yours, so that you know what to look for in some of these areas.
Thank you.
And one thing I will add also to that is that we are trying to engage the townships and the borough committees to kind of take on this walk with us as it relates to cultural diversity, the drug concerns, and just really knowing that we're in partnership. We have students that don't come to our schools, they live here. We have families that don't have kids at all in our school district, and so they might hear about something happening and not know that the school district is actively engaged in addressing it. That kind of that closing the loop doesn't necessarily happen. So we really have spoken with our partners in the township and borough committees to engage, and they... engage, and they are in full, in full spirit of that. Alex.
I was going to ask, do we do any surveys after, after these chats to get some feedback from folks short-handed on what they thought? Thanks. Do we do any surveys after the chats to get feedback from folks short-handed on what they thought about it, maybe some ideas for improvement? Okay.
As we go.
Right, not, it's not about knowing who came, but kind of getting feedback from people off at the tail end of the meeting, what they thought about the, it's not a meeting, it's a chat, right? Right. What they thought about it, if they have any ideas for maybe what to do next time, or even topics that would be of interest, right?
Yeah, no, I agree, I was saying that.
That's good.
Oh, I got, yeah. Okay, cool.
Okay. Awesome. SCL, yeah, I'm up again.
So we had our SCL meeting where Dr. Hoffman gave a talk to the committee on Character Strong, really so that we got a deep understanding of our new SCL curriculum. You know, she helped, you know, sort of put the background to the rationale on why the school district selected Character Strong, how it fits in with the CASL framework and the ASCA standards, and also aligns with some of the other programs that we're using. And then she talked a little bit about how the curriculum is being used in our K through 12 buildings and our classrooms. Some of the highlights were parent caregiver letters, so that once we roll this out, our community can understand a little bit more about what the curriculum is like. There's also a school library for the K through five components, some podcasts for teachers to listen to, websites. So it's really a significant and all-inclusive SCL framework and curriculum that I really look forward to seeing the impact on our community. We also talked about some of the evaluation and measures that we could be using in the future, that once this is rolled out completely. The district has actually an SCL, or had, I should say, because it's the 13th and it was on the 10th, had an SCL day where they collected activities for everyone to participate in that connected to the Character Strong. So I can't wait to hear about the update on that at our next meeting. Let's see, what else we discussed here? I think the majority of the meeting was about that. The other highlight was that we're beginning session five of our Nurtured Heart Program, so that's a program the district has had in place for several years. And I'm really happy to report that there's 38 parents and caregivers attending that. So, you know, that is fantastic social emotional support for our students. I was always happy, after all these years of implementing, that we still have a pretty large cohort of people that are coming in and getting trained on that. And that's our SCL.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay. See, we'll move on to policy.
Okay. We had a meeting last Friday and had a lot of interesting discussion, which I'll try to relay. So first, can I have a motion to move the policies and regulation up for first reading, please? Excellent. Okay, so just when you thought the state puts enough responsibility on our administrators and staff with regard to students who attend school in our district, we're adding a new policy and modifying some regulations which give them additional responsibilities for students who attend non-public schools in our district, as well as homeschool students. So first, we have policy 2700, services to non-public schools students. This is very educational, I had never realized before, but we do have responsibilities for some non-public school students. Some, the majority relate to special education services. For instance, we are responsible for providing speech services for such students, and that seems, you know, seems very reasonable. The other two main areas which come across are nursing services, as well as library services. To some extent, you know, non-public school students do have certain levels of access to books that we, that we procure. So this is a new policy, and it covers that. We then have policy and regulation 9270, homeschooling and equivalent education outside of the schools. So again, these wind up detailing our responsibilities and our relationship to homeschool students. And overall, I think they're very good. The one thing I will say is, these are revisions, and if anything, I'd say they are making our job a little bit more difficult. Previously, there was a requirement for caregivers for homeschool students to provide details of how they are meeting the scholastic requirements to the district, but that is no longer being required. So the onus is on the school district to ensure that those students are meeting, they're getting their educational needs met. So it's pretty complex, it's spelled out, but, you know, I think these are changes that don't necessarily help us, so.
What Adam is sharing, if we're concerned that a parent is not homeschooling or educating their kids or providing them the homeschool equivalent, it's more our job to prove that they're not than their job to prove that they are. It makes it tougher if you're concerned that a child is just truant, to really reinforce that truant.
And I'd agree. You know, many, many parents do a wonderful job homeschooling their students, so, you know, it's not trying to make it a burden on them, it's just, in those instances where something is occurring, it's a problem.
So question.
So just to be clear, what we have to prove and who we have to prove it to? Now, I, it's on. I can just be loud enough, so we don't need a mic. So just to clarify, what we have to prove and who we have to prove it to? It's not that we have to prove to the state that a homeschool child is actually getting adequate schooling. If we are concerned that a child is not and we want to intervene, we have to then prove that that's the case.
Yes.
But we do not have a requirement to monitor
No.
what parents are doing, because at first I thought it was that, and that would be really on.
No, no, it's not, it's not our responsibility to provide them a curriculum to ensure that they have an equivalent of that. This is really, if you have a kid that you think is being neglected, right, that they're not in school. And quite frankly, if, if that came across, where we had a kid that was, that we thought was in trouble and that was going on, we'd start jumping through the hoops. That's so rare. But, but, you know, again, most of our parents, they, when they homeschool their kids, they have that intention, they do a very good job of it. This is rare.
Thank you.
No, thank you for clarifying that, Rosita, and thank you for asking the question, Alex. Okay, and then the last one we have up for first reading is policy 2415.50, Title I, School Parent and Family Engagement. So this is basically describing our program for reaching out to the parents in our Title I schools to ensure that they are aware of the program, what its goals are, what it, what it's trying to do, and to get their feedback so we can go ahead and improve what we're doing. And I want to thank Dr. Treese and Dr. Politzis for taking the time. They were very thorough in outlining some specific things that we do as part of our Title I program for that outreach. So they went ahead and added that, and we've got it all detailed now. So, so, Policy Committee is recommending these be adopted for first reading.
Okay. Okay.
Just a voice.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining, or? I don't know why I keep tripping over my words. It's been a long day.
Yes.
Any of those?
Yep. Okay, can I have a motion to review and approve the policy 8561, which is up for second reading? Motion to, to move that. Great. So we discussed this last month, it's unchanged from what was proposed for first reading. This is basically a codification of what we do in terms of school nutrition programs. This one doesn't have any, any significant changes to us in terms of how we operate, right? So it's more or less putting in place what we do, but, but making sure it's specific and putting in some necessary changes from the state. So again, Policy Committee is recommending this be approved now for second reading.
Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Sewicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson. Ms. Driver. Dr. Genovasi. Dr. Liliston. Ms. Williams Galliano. Motion carries.
So we need a motion and second to approve calendars for March and April?
Okay, so what I have set right now is, I think SCL already set a meeting for April. I have it as April 13th on the calendar, does that ring a bell for those folks?
I think we're good. Jack.
Said it already.
Dewey.
Financing facilities, I was thinking the 17th, April 17th, 5 o'clock.
That work for?
17th? Yep. You got, Personnel will be the 24th, as always, at 6:15, day of the meeting. We need the policy?
That looks great.
Yes.
Do you pay back that ed program? Earlier than 5, work for community relations? 4 o'clock?
That works. Sorry, work for you, Jack? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, so moved. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at future meetings so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comments now open. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Okay. Don't I have a? Okay. So I need a motion and a second to move into Executive Committee, and we will have a discussion regarding HIBs, and no action will be taken. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstaining or opposed? Okay. Let's move to executive session.